All right, welcome everyone to April 11th, 7 o'clock, 24th meeting. We had two work, one work session this week, Waylock Pizza Hut. And then we also had a public attention for review and approval of the Seater for the Wood Landing. Those were completed this past Tuesday. Has everyone had enough time to review the minutes? Have a motion to approve the minute? Joe? I'll second. All in favor? Great. All right, we have three items on the agenda this evening. The first one is going to be Canalway Commons. This is part of a condition from the previous approval. They are here to show us materials and updated design for the entry wall to that site. Looks like we have Rob on the line, Rob?
Yep.
Oh, yes. Joe is going to be recusing themselves from this one. So we will not be, uh, welcome to the audience. But Rob, you can pull that up.
Okay.
So if you can just kind of take a quick, I can go through this, I think we've all had an opportunity to review this, but.
Yeah, I can just walk you through the package and see if you have any additional questions. So as we talked about at the last meeting, we went back and took a look at using some natural limestone materials, full-size blocks versus the veneer. So this, this material that we've submitted is right over a paragon. We listed the size ranges on here, it's basically about 12 inches per course. And then the lengths and depths vary a bit, but they're about 12 inches high by 18 inches deep roughly. And then they range from 2 to 6, 2 to 5 inches in length. So you could see it gives kind of that nice horizontal coursing that we talked about. So that's the first sheet is material sheet. And then the next couple of sheets, we submitted these earlier in the week, and since then, we've added some dimensions on there just to give a little more detail. But the walls are in the same horizontal configuration as the walls on the approved site plan. As I said, each course is about a foot, so we've got three courses, so the first course would be partially buried at the low end. And then two full courses, so we've got three full courses, the length of the wall. And then where the columns were in the previous design, we stacked up some, two more courses of of the blocks to give that same kind of gateway feel. So that's, that's one view. This is front on elevation view, so be about three courses out of the ground at the, at the high end. So it's about three foot high at the gateways and the wall is roughly two and a half to three feet wide.
Okay.
And so since the, since the last set we submitted earlier this week, we've updated the, the, the plan layout, so it's, like I said, it's the same configuration as the previous walls. So let me jump to the cross-sections here, so so we've got 12 inches of compacted stone as a base. And then we've got a double-sided wall that, that has a batter on it, so it's, because we're not retaining any grade, the wall kind of supports itself with the two sides. So as it, as it steps up, it, it steps in an inch batter roughly on each course. And then we'll fill in the center with fresh stone. And then this is the cross-section at the pier. So that's a full five courses at the piers.
Great. Any questions from the board?
So I just saw a little inconsistency with the sketchup compared to the plan. Could you just clarify, does the walkway go directly out to the black walls? Or is there, say, a six-inch gap between them?
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd probably want to leave a little bit of a gap, there'll probably be a little bit of stone in there. But the dimensions, the dimensions haven't changed from, from the original upside plans, which are here. So you come off of the, the bike trail, and you've got a little bit of a landing and then the ramp starts, starts to sway down.
What you're picking up is on your actual CAD plan, you've got the sidewalk showing going out and touching the base course of, of the rock wall.
It might be better not to have a little strip of, of lawn.
I think the little bit of lawn will turn into just a little bit of weed.
Well, I think it would, it would have to be stone or if they want to pour right up against the wall, it depends on how smooth of a face they can get. You'd have to put a, you know, an expansion joint material in there and they
Kind of a joint there.
Yeah, I think the goal is to go by, was to be by plan versus by the sketchup model for imagery.
Yeah, no, no grass.
You got that?
Yep. Yep, we can widen that out, so it meets.
Document, the, the plan is correct.
Yeah, yeah, the approved site plan, yep.
Yeah, so that we understand the, the sitting areas between 18 and 24 inches in height above grade, right? More or less? Right?
Yes. Yes, this, this area would be about 18 inches and that's about 20, 24 here. A little higher down here.
Same at the, at the pier end and 22 to 24 at the, at the floor west.
But I think it's only like 12 at the pier because the grass comes up to like the one block, so it goes like, kind of, yeah.
Couple inches in that bottom, there should be probably a couple inches of that bottom to at the corner. 12 plus two, 12 plus three.
Yeah.
That's the way you want to express that one body course.
Yeah, me too.
If it's the right Okay, great. So what I'll, I mean, this, since this is just satisfying one of the conditions from our previous approval, I'll just get a general acceptance from this board. Yes? So thank you, well, this will be filed with the rest of the project.
Okay.
In there. So thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, thank you, appreciate you pushing us through.
Yep.
Hey, good night.
You too.
Bye, bye.
All right, next up, we're going to FedEx. The concept presentation for 10,000 square foot complete service.
Can I plug in?
You may. Pull up for, you know, like a couple minute.
Yeah, real quick, and actually, a bunch of the team members are on the, the call as well, so.
Choice of thought?
It's in the black mark on the wall.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Ah, thank you. Sharon or I should have got it?
Is the screen sharing?
By that, sorry, I had, can't get stuff to see anything. So we ended it shared. Man, Everell and Everell Consulting, online, we have the ownership slash development group, Michael Bryan. And sorry, just make sure to get it all together. Grayson Zender and Gerald Noble, they're online as well, our project architect, Ford and Associates, Rob McInnes, he'll talk a little bit further about the, the building as we get into it, so quickly.
Michael Bryan, Grayson Zender, Rob McInnes, and someone else?
Gerald Noble. So they're, they're all on our Zoom call today. The project site is the existing FedEx facility situated off of the cul-de-sac road. And just losing my mind a little bit today, of Canada, 201 Canada Drive. As we zoom into it, take a look at that facility, the existing freight facility is sitting here kind of to the west side of the site. The subject site that we're dealing with is an existing temporary building that they, FedEx is asked to the, the owner developer to take that down, put a permanent building, a 10,000 square feet shop slash maintenance facility. In so doing, there are some other site issues that we want to type, type to address. Existing survey has been performed with complete utility, so we don't have conflict. So in here, I'm just going to slide these guys out a little slightly. So on our site plan, we lose that arrow when you get in here. So this is the existing fueling dispenser location that's sitting in front of that. That is going to stay and remain. There is a snow brush that is located in this area, we're going to relocate the snow brush back here to the north side of the site. And then the facility itself is a 10,000 square foot permanent building, which we'll get into, and the third portion of this is FedEx is looking to provide a hurricane shelter for their employees, and they're doing this throughout their facilities throughout to the country. So I'm going to kind of hit these points real quick. So on the building side on our site, I zoomed into that particular graphic showing that, that new shop slash maintenance facility, it will have three service bays that are drive-through bays that will allow for that vehicle maintenance. There'll be a wash bay, so on this, which would be the east profile, there'll be three overhead doors. There will be a smaller overhead door here on the west side for other maintenance facility, uses on that, on that particular location of the site. I'm going to let Rob from a remote talk about the building elevations, material types and colors, Rob?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Rob McInnes with Ford and Associates Architects. We are located here in Columbus, Ohio. Would you like me to state my address for the record?
No, don't need that.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you being so accommodating and letting us call in virtually. So to pick up where we left off here, for the building, this is a 10,780 square foot three-bay shop building. It measures 80 feet deep by 134 foot nine inches long. The construction is going to be a pre-engineered metal building to match the existing office and terminal building. If we go to the elevations there, the typical frame height at the eve is 20 feet tall. And the top of roof at the ridge will be 22 foot three and a half inches tall with a quarter inch per foot slope roof. What we're proposing for the pre-engineered metal building siding is we're, we're hoping to enhance the siding by specifying a smooth pre-insulated wall panel to help add some visual interest to the facade as opposed to a typical pre-engineered metal building, vertical siding. These smooth panels have hidden fasteners and they're just overall much higher quality. And they, they make the building shine quite a bit more than your, your standard pre-engineered metal building. And then on the south building elevation, you can see there, we're going to provide a pre-finished metal canopy, so that'll be the, that'll be the front door more or less for the shop, for everyone that's going into the office. Then as as was previously stated, the tractor and trailer service bays are going to be over the, pardon me, they're going to be drive-through with overhead doors on each side, as you can see on the east and west building elevations. And then we'll have some glass and aluminum storefront window openings, which we show here on the east building elevation. So this is going to be a quarter inch per slope roof with a continuous gutter, and then we'll have downspouts going on the exterior. And one thing we did here is the, the prototype typically has an exterior roof ladder with a, with a cage. And we're going to relocate that to the interior of the building to avoid any unattractive ladders on the exterior of the facade. And you can see in elevations here as well that we don't have any signage that we're proposing on this building. So all the existing signage is going to be located at the existing monument sign and then at the existing office, all that will be, remain, there's no new signage being proposed. I think that about sums it up for the building.
Yeah, so I'll quickly go through the other amenities, the other thing is that survive a storm shelter or a hurricane shelter. This is a prefabricated unit that'll be put on a hosh slab looking in this type of configuration. Again, this is something that FedEx is, is looking to provide for their facilities. And then, for the employees, yeah, that has and I can pull up another graphic, but this particular shelter, I believe, has the capability for short-term, 20, 24 employees to be in, in safe, secure locations. It just essentially is a, a box with benches on both sides that can enter and through a force of nature event, be secure. I don't know, Rob, or if Mike wants to, or Gerald, talk further about the purpose and the need of this by FedEx.
Is it considered a permanent or a temporary structure?
It's, it's, it's permanent structure, I mean, it's, it is a hosh slab, but it is securely bolted down to that slab.
Typically, this is Michael Bryan, again, thank you for the flexibility of allowing us to dial in. Typically, these are a permanent from a tenant perspective, so we have a long-term lease with FedEx, we would anticipate this be here through the course of the next 15 years at least. If the tenant ever vacated, there's we see an opportunity to do that if we had to.
And is this something FedEx is using standard in all their facilities now, maybe?
What, what is it for here in upstate New York? I, I'm understanding that, but we don't have hurricanes here typically, so I'm just asking.
This would be more of a tornado, this would be more in the event of a tornado and FedEx is putting these in.
We've had two in our lifetime.
A brainstorm of 1980s.
Yeah. Um, so it would, would it be, it, it would be required to be all the building codes, the energy code, insulation, right, heating?
I mean, I don't obsess, that's why I asked, if it's temporary or permanent, how does that work? Something like this.
Rob, do you want to?
You know, that's a good question. I have not had this, this is a prefabricated unit, it typically gets permitted separately. And I have not had to deal with energy codes on this specifically. I it, it's, I don't, this may be considered a semi-heated, if there is any heat at all, it's you raise a good point, but I, I don't know if we would have to adhere to the same energy codes as the building.
This is Gerald Noble, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I, I work for Kiran and West, and these buildings are emergency use only. They're focused mainly on being a tornado shelter. Typically, they do not have power, they do not have heating or anything like that. They do have emergency lighting in them. They'll have an emergency stool in them, but it is basically an unoccupied building unless there's a tornado or some sort of emergency coming through the building or the area, so.
I, I understand, I, I mean, I'm just trying to think the, the code halfway from a zoning point of view, that's our focus, but right. It's got to get permitted eventually.
Why not put a basement under your offices of your new building, it seems like that would be the way to go in upstate New York.
Well, I have a problem with words, please.
Yes, that's where I was going, I, I mean.
Our new, yeah, our new building, if you can actually zoom in there, we are providing a separate storm shelter within the, the shop building as well. It's hard to tell, but if you go to our floor plan, you can see the eight-inch thick concrete bunker that's within those two small offices there.
Do you have the piece?
Can we move people from one building later?
Well, yeah, because they're moving people from the other building to that shelter.
Right.
It's not big enough to kind of get people in the other building.
They put the basement in there, would.
I got floor plan here.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Hold on, let me zoom in.
Oh, I see, right. That's people room, alcohol, storage.
Keep going down a little bit. There you go. Just planned north of that break room, those two small offices are within a, a concrete enclosure that's going to serve as a FEMA-rated tornado shelter as well. We, we.
Issue from taking people from the other building to here. And just saying, hey, let's, let's expand, expand the building four feet or something to make it fit around with you.
That would be my assumption is FedEx Freight probably doesn't feel comfortable having people traveling that long of a distance and not to mention the employee count, I don't know, would fit within that, those two small areas.
But if you incorporate it to break room?
Yeah.
And just expand the size of it?
You could put a shutter on the windows and.
I think what we're looking at is the fact that this hurricane tornado shelter that you're putting is, is right in front of the building, it's on this
Yeah.
one little patch of grass that's in front of the building and even from the image that was just shown, it's not that attractive for something that
Storage container for people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a storage container for people. And there's, it, it doesn't look like there's really anywhere else on site to place it. That's, I mean, you're not slipping into the other side of the building, that's no better.
Well, if there's offices inside that building, they could modify those offices to have shelter and place capabilities.
Yes.
And not affect the outside, to make the walls impact resistant, anchor it down. Just different design solution possibilities.
Something to consider.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could we treat this as a, just a very large generator? And, and try and screen this as a separate way?
All right, so that's the tornado shelter.
Right, and the, the last piece was just a, a snow brush, typical snow brush, which
On-site already.
On-site already, just moving location. This was part of the application package, again, coming from Kiran and West and kind of giving some visual impacts of what's real off of Canada Drive, looking at the site, this brown piece here is that temporary a temporary building that exists that'll come down, so it's about the location of the new shop. This is looking at the existing FedEx freight, main building.
Pause it right here for one second.
Yes, sir.
So the other thing that we were just talking about, in terms of the new building and being the piece of on-site is to actually, you've got a little bit of a, a base course on the new building, but is to emulate more of what's happening on the main building, bring that stone base up, based up, you know, locker or something, bring it up, the water table, put your metal panel on top of it, you know, but make it look more like the same building.
Understood, but at the same time, this building is even, it's behind the fueling station. And it's, and when you look at it from Canada Drive, which is a dead-end cul-de-sac road, and then we look at it compared to our neighbors, which I'll go all the way back to the beginning.
I mean, just as consideration, this was a previous project that was worked on long and hard and actually a fourth-winning project here in town, so you know, we're going to try and protect the site a little bit in terms of the building that's over there.
Overall campus perspective.
And if you're using the justification that that's behind the building, what did you want to do at the front of the building again? So.
And the comment that it's just the old dead-end cul-de-sac, that's because it's, that's the only for developing bag in there, that now all of a sudden, somebody else is from here.
Also, yeah.
Right. So the other pictures are just the neighborhood and the other buildings surrounding us, which again, just wanted to kind of
You're better built, we just want to make sure this stays as the standard.
So that's our preliminary presentation, and we appreciate the time today. One thing that we talked about with our team is potentially kicking these things around in the, the next work session, so that we can hammer out those particular issues. And then hopefully, keep it moving forward for FedEx before we get to the next planning.
So right now, you're on a track date. So the next work session is on the page, but we can get you off the nurse. We don't, if we have anybody on the nurse, so the next session. Next.
And then, is that color supposed to represent the same color as the building? Also, I'm just asking, like, in fact, color?
Yes, ma'am, that matches the terminal portion of the building, so the terminal, I have these notes up here, the existing terminal is 27,600 square feet. And that extends out off of the 5,000 square foot office. So that really nice.
It currently goes from like a tan brick and didn't base and rebuilding to a gray metal building? Okay.
That, that's my understanding, but it did, the, yeah, the intention was for the siding color to match the terminal siding color.
Yeah, I was, was just looking at the ones on Google Earth, and I just didn't see the difference, so I didn't find it.
So I didn't hear, so I excluded it mine just for the work session. May I? So ways, the way that we get like sorry about this right now, you probably want to be on the work sessions. This next one 23rd. So if we want to place something David Law on the 23rd. So with the, with the meeting on the 23rd, certainly update based on any comments we've given you now, I try and get your comments. You're going to have a quick turnaround at the 25th, to get the next submission in to meet that deadline for the next planning.
We know we might, might have a close review of comments.
All right. Sir, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last up, we've got the white waters cooling tower. Yeah. Anyone from White Waters here?
Yep.
So, I'm here, I'm Dave Mitchell, I'm with Barton O'Jus. Here representing Grant. Behind this point, to basically install a new cooling tower that basically exists. They have it sideways building. On its last legs. Yeah, I have mechanical people in my office, such people now is working on. Engineering design and the, the tower, the connection to the building. That being said, I have Jeff Nash here, who's our licensed landscape architect, he's involved in the project with citing that. Cooling tower outside on the north side of the existing building. I know a little bit of history about what's transpired previous to our involvement. I believe Granite tried, they came in, they presented plans improperly. And that's why we're involved. So we've taken there, which is we've. Placed it on plan, on the site plan. We've, based on some early conversations, we, we've. I think we've addressed as best we can at this point, I think the main issue is screening at the. Originally, we were gonna have, the owner wanted the cooling tower on the northeast side, which is facing the street, Whitewater's. Parkway, sorry. But we've moved it to the north side, which is. Not as noticeable, I think it's a lot less noticeable from the street. Uh, we have it tucked in behind some trees, existing vegetation trees are there. Uh, we've created basically a six foot buffer around the cooling tower, based on the manufacture of the cooling tower itself. They require that for ventilation. We've proposed a six foot privacy fence. Uh, vinyl clad privacy fence. To try to help lessen the impact of the visual aesthetics. The unit itself is eighteen foot long, roughly six and a half, six, six and a half foot wide, it's gonna sit on a pad that's one foot. Larger than that on all four sides.
It's that tall? How tall?
Uh, the unit at the highest point is eleven feet.
So you have the six foot privacy fence and eleven foot unit?
Yeah. We have. A rendering, you know, very orientary rendering. That actually reflects the position kind of relocated. Well, basically what's visible is that's it, so.
So has been. What do you test down in the?
No, our intention at this point, at this point is, is best we can, keep it at grade. And try to visually. Offer the, the impact of the unit and its aesthetics.
What is this?
Six foot fence.
The, to the top rail of the fence is how high?
Six feet.
Six. And the unit is eleven feet?
At the highest point, yeah, it's not, it's not, and that, that picture right there.
Yeah.
Your scale of the force is here way off then. I mean, it's.
That's probably three.
It's gotta be double at a height.
Well, I have a cut sheet on the unit. So I know the actual height of the unit.
No, I know.
That view is kind of. Perspective view, so it's not really showing, you know, eye level with the top of the unit, so it's my, my, my question of perspective, I'd really go to the, the data line. That I can see, which are the head of the windows, maybe it'd be about eight feet off the ground plane, round numbers, give or take five or four or five inches. If we're at eleven feet and the perspective pulled out, it's actually become much higher than that band, because it's, it's. Um, I know the other, uh, I'm confirming right now, the other typical units in that park, if we're to keep the rhythm of the park going. That's sort of the language that exists, they are regressed into the ground to alleviate some of these issues.
Sure.
I think what we've.
I, I.
I think what we could do if we had to, is if it would help, we could put an eight foot high five center instead of six foot, so. Losing two feet of the.
Are you considering the occupants that have windows in front of that fencing?
Currently, what we have at site right now, my understanding is that, that. Space is vacant.
For how long?
And why can't you put it back inside the building where the existing unit is?
Uh, well, the, the thought is they don't wanna run into the same problem, whoever has the problem in the future. Getting to the end, having leaks, everything fail, having water drop down into the. Typically, cooling towers are outside of them. Move outside, you don't put them inside, this is an anomaly.
The existing unit probably got some sort of.
They're up on the roof. There are no. Cooling tower on the second floor of the existing building, I'm sorry, the cooling tower that exists now is. Yeah, there's a picture of it. It's on the second floor, right?
Is there a reason it can't be?
I have reasons, I don't know if you folks will buy into. Well, okay, so, I, I'm a pragmatic kind of guy, I'm an engineer, I'm pragmatic, I'm practical. To me, when you put a pit in the ground, there's a maintenance issue. Now, I understand there's, you know, you can always say, well, that's their duty to clean it up. In each of what it is. Things could get plugged, you know, if you, you're gonna have to have an alley, right? And if it gets plugged, the asphalt on that too in the summertime is skee. And they do that. So, in my mind, I think the, the best solution is.
Have you stayed? The location out, looked at, there were plenty of trees, you know, those six trees around there?
We looked at that. I'm gonna get it in there.
Yeah.
You can list, you, you can list stuff up on the roof then, right?
For that location?
Certainly.
This here, what, what are the sound decimal ratings for these units, because these can be, this could be loud.
Um, that's a good question, I don't have an answer to that, um, my guess is it would be something.
What about following our standard, it's like a dumpster and saw here, breaking some. Yeah, I mean, that, you know, the privacy fence.
They don't like that.
So we, the other, the other, I'm sorry, the other alternative would be your option. Alternative option would be I could put in a, like a, say a three foot high knee wall. Like, or near onto it. If I squint and look at the elevation of this building, I see brick base, brick columns, black looking windows set between. These vertical elements, if we went out in that yard and developed a brick screen wall that's three or four feet tall. Corner column elements, the brick going up in cap, and then, then we develop the screening wall, you know, black metal. Some type of element in there, so it reads like an element of the building, that wraps aside, so there you go, we got this architecture out there, not just a. A chunk of fence covering up metal, ugly, ugly metal box.
Your cooling lines, sorry, where do you run all your?
Well, they're gonna go through the wall, behind the screen, we never seen it.
No, no, I'm just asking, it's right in the building.
Yeah, but where is the, the, where is it now? Where is the chiller now?
Roughly rated. Uh, roughly right in here, here's the main entrance lobby area, you come up the stairs, it's coming down the hallway here, it's right in here. I mean, we, I understand your point, Mr. Trump was, started, the look at the building and tying it in. I'm not gonna, I'm. My, for my advantage, when I'm coming into this thinking, okay, and I'm not trying to chintz anything out, but I'm not gonna wanna spend any more money on it. If I have to, so that's why we came in with vinyl clad privacy panels, it's on the backside of the building, thinking, okay. Who's really gonna see it but the employees enter the building? And in fact, Angelo, who I'm dealing with from Granite, we had actually pushed it up here further, and she's like, well, don't get it too close to the entrance. She didn't want too close to the entrance for people, perspective, you know, at least.
Have we explored or talked about placing it on the roof with screening?
I looked at that two years ago, I'm a structural engineer. You can't do it without a lot of modification costs.
Steel tonnage, no, steel tonnage?
Well, you gotta take that look down through.
The theme in Whitewater's Parkway has been to hide all of them with some brick enclosure.
Yeah, what if you use like a perforated brick enclosure and then you could make it even a little tighter, because. That's in the past, we've designed a few masonry enclosures where the bricks were. Perforated, not, not the bricks individually, but they were laid, so the air could get through. Yeah, and then it would match, there's a lot of different masonry design patterns in that building. And it could match that and make it so you could make it a little bit tighter around there, so you wouldn't have to have twelve extra feet. But you might be able to get four extra feet, you know, on each side instead of six.
Oh, wow, you need the six feet ventilation.
Yeah, but if you made a perforated wall, if you made a perp, a wall that air can go through, you can get it closer than the big.
I don't think that's the issue.
Always to pull something out and replace.
I think one of the things limiting our, our wall to on this location was trying to stay out of some of the root zone, the trees. And not have to excavate down into that. We haven't really finalized the location, but there is some critical root zone areas out there.
I mean, if we, if we had to, we could probably.
We'd like to keep the trees, just to kind of aid and. Yeah, I think what she's actually suggesting would fold that in, so that you're not as close to.
I'd like to be able to do that, trust me, I would, it's less money. What I'm being told by my mechanical engineer through the vendor, you need to have six foot clear on the outside of this thing.
Yeah, I think she's right, if you had perforated, you could probably drop it down.
Yeah.
You ask them. I mean.
If you ask them.
Yeah, that's the right question.
Yeah, you gotta ask the questions.
I mean, if, if you were to put it in, in no way is this suggesting, because it's not the plan, but if you were to put a chain link fence there, your chain fence would need to be six feet away. For ventilation, right?
That's the, that's the analogy.
Yeah.
So, adding that for bringing the airflow through it is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so I'm understanding, I agree.
Yeah, I'm just looking for ways to, if it blend into the building more.
So there's an existing transformer there on the right side?
And there's another, there's a, a generator.
So I mean, we already have equipment on this side of the building. Why can't we put it there and start to introduce some of this architectural screen on this side, it's away from the entrance, it's away from kind of the public side of the building?
It's on the public screen side.
But if it were screen, was correct, it would look nicer.
I, I just, I don't know, I, from a design point of view, I think it's a terrible place to put it up against a building for. I mean, from an engineering and mechanical point of view, I think it's a terrible place to put it.
Actually, no. That's what I'm told.
Tight to the building?
No, 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 it's location relative to the existing canopy room.
Well, yeah, of course, you want as close as possible, but in terms of the facade, I think.
Well, that's an engineering aspect, you said as far as an engineering aspect, as far as an engineering aspect, design of the system, it's better to have it.
From a building enclosure design point of view, it's, it's not a good place to put it.
Those are two different things.
Yeah.
I just assumed it was closer on the other side where you were just saying, because that's where they first wanted to put it.
It is, but, so I'm being told, again, that one space is unoccupied. They unvetted access to be able to get the piping over to the canopy room. Versus, this is not the case over here, here they probably have, they would probably have to run the piping up over, up the face of the wall. Know the roof and then back down.
I think we've got a couple of issues that. Need to be addressed. Yes, so one is location. You know, are, are we comfortable with the location there, one of them is screening? How are we gonna screen this, and how are we gonna incorporate that into the buildings that it does look like a typical size of this thing?
We, we will work with the, obviously, we have.
And, and to appreciate that, we'll, we'll work, we'll do this together and we'll get it where it needs to get to.
Yeah.
But, I think, we're a little hesitant right now, because. Certainly it's. It's, I mean, the building's in Whitewater's. Having a unit at this point, right up against the side of the building with. Vinyl privacy fence around it. Tractor, so something, taking a look at some of the other enclosures that are there, pointed out that are, if you're seeing a view. However, they're there, you know, the other thing is just the overall size and height, it's eleven, twelve feet, I mean. Unit itself is eleven feet, plus whatever pad you put underneath it, that you're elevating it out of. Right, so you're at twelve feet, definitely. You know, you're getting up close to the sill of the windows. Second floor. So. And then, yeah, just the overall size, so those, those are all considerations, I think we're gonna need for further discussion.
Nah, I'm just asking, how would you like, so this is gonna go to work session, okay, so?
I, you know, wanna see kind of your next iteration, this, based on our comments.
Now, as far as showing whether the unit, the enclosure is here or over here, does that matter as far as we can see?
Sorry.
Location aside.
Yeah.
When we talk, when we try to hold this thing, yeah, right to it, does it matter what you see, or whether we, we develop it here or over here?
No, I mean, I think.
You know, I'm thinking, what I'm hearing is we're, we're concerned with. How we're streaming behind it, right, so, I mean, if we can work with you, I mean, if we can work with you. With, with enclo- with, with the enclosure, you, how that looks, not necessarily where it's cited on the plan, and then comes second. Sort of decision process or? Hey, what, what's generic, I just, I just spun around at both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, the north side is, even if there are gears there, it's wide.
Over here.
Yeah, over there, that side, the trees are being saved.
There's a grass and no right here.
And here, that's obvious.
I, I don't know, I disagree.
Yeah, he, he pointed him in opposite direction, he's saying, if, if you put it on the side towards the road. There's much more ability to naturally screen it, to add like three.
See, I think, I think this unit right now is somewhat screened partially because of that. Well, it's only three foot high.
No, yeah, it's not.
Right now, it's not, it's not that firm, the firm's so.
That's, that's certain. The strategy is to utilize architectural screening around this thing, then I think it could just be as successful. Over there, this be talking, instead of having it in, really, which is the, the public side, public front of the building. Yeah, trees, to me, that's a, that's a win-win if we make the work. I mean, there, there could be additional vermin, something that's gonna, that's.
Screen what's already there.
Yeah, what's already there, it's great, yeah.
Can you guys give me some level, some sense of concern with? Piping up the face of the wall? piping up the face of the wall?
Yeah, don't do that.
Don't do that. Yeah, I'm pragmatic and I'm practical, I'd like to think everybody.
Yeah.
So if we have to run piping up the face of that wall.
How big is the piping? So why wouldn't you poke it through the wall and make it chase inside like you were gonna do in the other side? Yeah, I, I would just assume they would wanna, like you said earlier, if it's outside, now you have to maintain that.
Yeah.
And you wanna protect it from the weather and the sun somehow anyway, so you may as well poke it inside where it's always gonna be protected. Yes.
I'll have to, I'll have to get with my, my folks.
Yeah.
If it is left on the outside, it's gonna need to be screened, it's gonna need, need to be.
Well, that's what I mean.
It's definitely a design solution that, that you're looking at, we gotta take a few looks, I think.
So, but that's if you put it over there, right, and are we sat, I'm putting it over there, I know this fellow here is.
No, you could probably sell it.
It's the arena.
I think, I think you could sell it to us in both areas, so, I think, but this wouldn't work for us anywhere. What you, what this is, isn't working for us anywhere.
How, how are you, how are you screening that?
Correct. So I think you could sell a solution to us in either location, it's just that we, this isn't the right solution. Yeah.
It sounds like people are leaning more towards the other side.
The other side, sorry.
Street side, with additional landscaping, birmingham.
Oh, do you are leaning that way?
Well, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I think it's more opportunity, I think it's more opportunity to look at how it's placed in relation to the face of the building and naturalize it into the landscape there that becomes, that's a, that's something that makes the building work. It's not jammed against the building and it's screened by nature. I think that's visually, something we can get around, when it goes the other side, you know, I'm an architect, I, I immediately try and solve it architecturally. And I'm like, the solution there is a lot more intricate, I think, in it becoming a part of the building as it's meant to be, as it was meant to be part of the building from the original design. Versus just something that's, stuck out there because, gee, that's where you gotta put it. I knew there was something about. Okay.
So if it's in the lawn area, it would be preferred to have it some, an event corner.
I mean, anything you can do that's.
You know, I'll, I'll speak aloud, if it goes to the street side, and the idea that, you know, I agree a hundred percent with, we were looking at some of the other conditions just now, where there are weld-in and little structure wells. That's a maintenance issue, and that's, where's the water go, and what do you do, all that stuff. But by putting it on the street side and getting it out, like, that trans, existing electric transformer, and I'm looking at the photograph here, is out pretty far from the building. You could set it out there and sculpt that landform down and pick up two feet just in land undulation, forget the cost of any structure. Then immediately drops us down a foot and a half, two feet, whatever, and we start working on those things to start working to your advantage.
Pretty good feature on the road too.
Yeah, yeah, that's a little, the, the, looks like the drawing isn't exactly accurate to what they actually.
But does your mechanical engineer know that that cooling tower would be on the north side, like in the shade all the time also, like I thought, I didn't think, like, being in the dark would be good at all times for a mechanical unit outside.
We're just saying, I don't know what the, the regs are for Legionnaires' disease and prevention, that, I mean, that's gotta be.
So the exhaust is off the top of the unit, and that's why the thing's tall, because you have to put this, the amp on the thing that regulates based on demand. And that, that, that is, that addresses that ventilation and Legionnaires' disease issue, that has to belong, that's one of the reasons why.
Now, is there any problem with how close you can put trees, shrubs to that? I mean, getting used to burns, getting up the roads.
Yeah.
Thinking of what is there for that protection, but.
Well, when the air's, when the air's blown, there's nothing that's gonna get inside, it's pushing out, but, I mean, when the air's not blowing, the dampness closes.
I mean, you were saying you gotta have six feet around it.
Yeah.
Does, does that include trees and shrubs, can they be any closer?
Well.
And then depends on the design and the land, how far you put them, or how close you.
Well, I think the issue is whether or not we can live with some sort of, lessen that by perforated screen.
I mean, just, just to screen.
I mean, I don't know, again, a good question, I'd have to look into that.
Explore the option over there and how you can, like, best screen it? And, I mean, really, the, the bottom line is how best can we make it disappear, right? And not make it a whole wall, and it's a big, huge ogre, we're trying to conceal it, so if it's done through landscaping, through burning, through a screen around it, I mean, you're gonna wanna protect it anyway, so I assume there's gonna be a screen around it, what does that screen look like, how is that incorporated and tied into?
Are you, are you gonna want it closer to the building, or?
No, no.
Yeah, you don't wanna ruin people's day.
What's that?
I, I feel like it's, would be blocking a lot of windows.
Man, me, that's the, the time of the owner, and it goes to lease his space, and the people come in and checking out, and they look out, they see, I know, I, I blow up when I get stuck in the hotel room right behind all the pressure for the guys upstairs, which seems. Well, that'd be the least expensive place to lease. It's called, you get a deal too far that won't lease. Exactly. But that's the owner's problem, no, I hear you.
If you had a little routine wall into that, hell, burn, burn. Lot of gray at the end, the issue is even game, looking at it probably two feet or three feet.
We don't like here, here. If you carve into that, then the wall goes up above that, where it looks like a four-foot tall wall above that, but really you're now six or seven feet tall. You know, you're starting to, you're starting to get worse, then, then you take that burn, you can just undulate that burn up into that wall, and use the burn for the advantage. Word of the month.
You got it. Another question was, you need to show this picture, it looks like it's white or like gray.
Right, right.
No, yeah, it's gray.
A darker color can be painted, you know, to, to change that again.
But I'm thinking based on our conversations here, we're not gonna.
And you can't see it at all.
Yeah.
But you can see it, you know.
You gotta not be back.
Thanks also, that's good. Come in here, give them a little session.
Yeah, so I think you're on the same track, you're on track. Well, you're on the track, B, actually. So. I need, you'd be able to kind of take, take a look and digest all the stuff that we've given you and get us something to look at.
Well, when is there?
Well, my question is like, how are you, do you, you can turn around and get something?
I mean. What is today's? It's two weeks.
Our next work session is the twenty-third. It's, that's, that's just under two weeks, you need to have material in by the nineteenth.
The end of next week.
By the end of next week. In order to be on that work session at the twenty-third.
It's in the morning, by the way.
What time is the morning?
So, we, just to, just to bet on it, because the, the they're, they're not long work sessions, they're updating us, we're gonna feedback, consultation, work on things.
Yeah, we're gonna do it in the house. Yeah, we might soon, because stuff is like, yes, absolutely.
Can I tell him, because I don't like to. And I don't.
Be here, you're well-well-known. Okay? Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That's all we got for the evening. Joe's gonna close, we'll, we'll, basically second.
Second close.
Oh, in favor?
You can't do that, right? Don't you say that when you.